Everyone, thanks for joining us. First item on the commission, the janitor's board's approval in minutes of August 15th. I'm worshiped by commission 11, they're through. I'll second that, any changes you want to make to the commission at the minute? Right hearing and I'm assuming you're in favor of adoption?
I am.
Okay. Item two is to recognize Isabel Patty out for her be as a service here at Stratford County. Isabel's been with us for 20 years, working in the jail. When we first started to do some real, well, case management. I'll recognize the superintendent for a second.
So, so as you said, she's, she has 20 years of experience and when she first started, we had a, we started a case manager position inside the facility. We didn't really have, we had a job description, but we didn't know where it would take. And I'm not entirely sure that it would have gone where it went if it hadn't been for Isabel in the way in which she approached her job. We have seen time and time again, the positive impact that she has made on the inmate population that's there. The advocacy that she makes for the inmate population that's there, the support that she provides to the, the staff that are there. We have, we have sought for somebody to work in that position. And I strategically say to work in that position because you can't replace Isabel. What you can do is you can try to see if we might be able to pick up the 19 to 2200 suitcases that she carries around of all of the things that she does, whether it's, whether it's to enroll people into insurance programs or get them to recovery centers or assist in translation services. The services that, that she has provided to those in our custody and to the, the represent, the, the members of Stratford County are just, are just too, too vast to, to talk about. I looked at her personnel file the other day because I was looking at like hire dates and stuff like that. And there are so many letters of recognition, of appreciation, emails that we receive from, from agencies where they really appreciate all the work that Isabel has done. And I said to her when I received the letter of resignation, her intent to retire. I said, I'm going to check with you every week to see if this is really something that you want to do. But every week that I've checked with her, she's been steadfast in her decision. We support her in that decision. I'm, I'm really excited to know how you're going to be spend, you're be spending your retirement with your family, which is just of utmost importance to you. And we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
I just want to one thing, you know, everything that Chris said is accurate and then some. But one of the things I think that, that Isabel doesn't get, or hasn't gotten recognized for is that it always hasn't been easy. That when Isabel started these programs and it, it wasn't the trendy thing to.
It wasn't the norm.
It wasn't the norm. And Isabel pushed her way through some adversity, particularly at the beginning for people to accept what, what we were doing, you know, for our inmates to ensure that they were successful upon release. You know, people say, oh, recidivism, recidivism, recidivism doesn't mean anything. It simply means that somebody's going back to jail. What, what's forgotten, how do we use the word recidivism is the impact it has on the victims in the community. That's the real issue, you know, the real issue that means a lot to people. And, and your contribution towards saving victims because of the work you've done with the inmates upon release is, it's been tremendous.
Yeah, the impact, the impact to the community is very, I'm not going to repeat what the superintendent and Ray said, but the impact on the community and when we first started doing discharge planning and in plain speak, Isabel spoke fluent Spanish, we had a lot of Spanish folks that were joining us. Many of them didn't speak English, so her, her expertise in speaking fluent Spanish made such a big difference initially. And really the position grew over time based on her efforts and the efforts of the administration to try to bring a facility into the 21st century. You've done a super job. So what are your plans? You're going to visit family? Is that what you're going to do?
So I have family, as I was telling you, my son got transferred to London. He's there with his family, so I want to go visit them and maybe do a little traveling in Europe. And, and then I have a daughter in Michigan, so the first thing I'm going to do is drive out to Michigan. I want to stop at the, at Niagara Falls. I've been there, but I want to take my time. Because you know, when you're working and you go on vacation, everything is rush, rush, rush.
Right.
But, and then I have a daughter in Florida, so, so you know, I'll be all over the place and, and and also I'm going to be home with my doggy who is, it's very, she's getting old and it's hard to, to leave her every morning. She's having separation anxiety as she gets older, so it'll be good to spend time home and, and get some projects done. You know, how many projects do we have waiting for us that we, we haven't completed or need to start? So anyway, I'm, I'm going to be busy and, and, but I'm going to take my time and enjoy myself and, and visit family. That, that's going to be very important.
Well, your work's been very important to the people of Stratford County.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Best of luck in your retirement. Maybe we'll bring you back at some point as a consultant or something. We've got a little something for you, Isabel. We don't give out gold watches in Stratford County because we're not rocking them. So, you know, oh, but there's a little something in there. We want to wish you the best of luck.
My 20 year pin.
20 year pin, yeah.
That's all I want is my 20 year pin. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I'll see you in the neighborhood anyway at some point.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Swing by the marina and say hello and the best of luck. You don't have to stay.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay. The rest is boring thing.
Yeah.
You want to go.
Sure. I, I have a lot of, I'm a pack rat, so I've been churning away at, at getting rid of stuff. 20 years worth of stuff, so excuse me.
It's going to be tough to replace.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much. You're around.
Well, that's a big loss for Stratford County. Anyway, let's move on to item number three. Mr. Bob, you want to talk about some energy efficiency program?
We have the gentleman.
Have the gentleman online?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. So Ray, I, I see you in there. Have you briefed the, the commissioners on the scope that we've outlined so far?
I have not. I mean, I briefed them that, that, you know, that we were working with you gentlemen, but I thought, I thought if I tried to brief them, they'd ask me questions and I know I couldn't answer. So I thought I would leave it up to you gentlemen this morning.
Great. So my name is Jack Paluchek. I, I work for EverSource. I'm an energy efficiency consultant. We got put in contact through our service account executive Greg Ray to Ray and Doug over there at Stratford County Complex. And we conducted a scoping study is what we call it, but it, it's an energy audit. We brought in our partners at GDS Associates, which is Jeremy Blanchard and John Cashel on this call. And you know, EverSource and Unitil would then work together. If you were interested in any energy efficiency projects to put together an incentive. And we've got Matt O'Keefe here at Unitil as well. So that's just sort of a high level intro and you know, I'll let Jeremy sort of go over the, the high level findings of the report and you know, what next steps look like, but I appreciate you guys giving us the time today.
Hey Jeremy.
Thank you, Jack. So Ray, if I share my screen, are you guys going to be able to see it? Oh, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. If I share my screen, are you able to see it?
Yes, we will.
Okay. All right. Let me. And then just to, so I understand the broader picture here, how much time do we allocate for this agenda item?
About a half an hour.
Okay, perfect. Get my. So nine, nine forty-five is fair.
Sure. Yeah.
All right, perfect. And then just, just so I understand sort of who's in the room, just get like a quick overview of, I don't want to spend a bunch of time on, on intros, but just generally speaking, who's, who's in the room so I can understand the audience?
Well, I guess the most important thing is the big bosses are in the room. The two county committees, myself, the two county commissioners, you know, who are the decision makers here for the county, you know, depending on the nature of the projects.
Perfect. Excellent. So let me, let me set the stage with, with what we did. As Jack alluded to, it is referred to as a scoping study. It is a no cost to the county, energy efficiency, high level audit. Again, I can't stress that the nature of high level because I don't want you taking these numbers to the bank. But essentially what it is, is an opportunity for us as an engineering and consulting firm to provide our ideas to the county on energy efficiency opportunities. It's a fairly quick walkthrough of the building, but then based on our experience and, and expertise, we put together this memo of those opportunities. And there's quite a bit here, so I want to just sort of highlight the big picture and then we can dig in as deep into some of these as you guys are interested in. So I'm showing my screen here. Is this, if I zoom in on this, is this sort of big enough?
It's not bad. I got great vision.
All right, perfect. So what we have is, is a list of what we call energy conservation measures for each of the facilities that we looked at. We did the Riverside Alms House as sort of one building. We did the Department of Corrections as a second building. The courthouse as a third, Hyder House as a fourth. And have four separate tables for each of those. So we'll just march through those, those four separate buildings. Feel free to jump in if you've got high level questions. So with that, the first measure that we identified is referred to as, as retro commissioning. This is effectively going into your existing control system and improving the, what are referred to as sequences of operation, how that system operates to increase the energy efficiency. Oftentimes there's optimization that you can do, but there's also just additional opportunities that you can do with new technologies, new controls to make those systems more efficient. And it's often a very good low hanging fruit, low cost, low payback opportunity. So you can see here for Riverside and Alms, it's, it's roughly a three year payback. And that's one of the things we like to sort of have you focus on with these tables. I'll be honest, EverSource requires us to put costs and savings in here. And so we have to do that. I would prefer not to just because people tend to latch on to those numbers. What I really want you to focus on is sort of the payback range. That's where we have the most comfort is we know that, you know, typical retro commissioning project with what we're seeing at the county for these buildings, it's going to be about a three year payback. Now, the costs and the savings could vary quite a bit, but we're confident that we'd be able to find a project with that, that type of payback range. One thing I want to note is that the incentives from EverSource and Unitil are not included in these paybacks. So if anything, they would be lower with those incentives from the electric and gas utility. Any questions on retro commissioning as a concept?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Perfect. The next one's a lot bigger, onsite generation. So the idea here is that you are currently leveraging electricity from EverSource, buying gas from Unitil. You have the opportunity with the amount of demand that you consume to self generate. So burn natural gas onsite to produce your own electricity. The reality right now is electricity is expensive and natural gas is, is inexpensive. And because of the technology that's available, particularly because you have a lot of hot water demand with the nursing home, that you can generate electricity and hot water at the same time. There's a couple of different technologies that could be evaluated. One of them is a reciprocating engine, combined heat and power system sold by a company called Tico Gen out of Massachusetts. They basically put an engine, a typical, you know, eight cylinder engine. And that engine turns a generator to, to produce electricity. At the same time, they recover the heat off of the engine jacket and the exhaust stack to generate hot water. That hot water is then used to shed load from your boilers, so it reduces your natural gas use from your boilers, but increases your natural gas use to generate electricity and hot water simultaneously. That is a, a fairly cost effective technology. I say barely because I feel like a four, four to five year payback is pretty darn good for a nearly million dollar project, but I recognize that it is a, you know, three quarters of a million dollar project. That technology is tried and true, been around for years. It's been demonstrated in Massachusetts for hundreds, if not thousands of projects. Another alternative is called a linear generator, which is a little bit of a newer technology, but is sort of proven at the utility scale. And that technology generates electricity, but does not recover waste heat. It is, it has the ability to be a quick response, almost like an emergency backup type of resiliency technology, but is more expensive and, and larger in capacity. So those are two options that could be evaluated. Any, any questions on those?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. The. I'm assuming that the generation that you're proposing here for electrical would support the, the both buildings, meaning the Alms House and Riverside?
Correct.
Okay, so it would support the entire structure operating, like say for instance, during an ice event where, where, when we lose power for, even though we're on a priority list with EverSource, if we lost power for a day or two, would it be enough, would it produce enough under this proposal to run both buildings?
So let me, let me show you how we would, we would size this type of system typically. So this is what's referred to as your load duration curve. So it is the amount of KW that the Alms House.
We can't see that, Jeremy.
Oh. So it's only showing you the PDF. Okay, sorry. Let me stop sharing. Oh, I need to actually share my window, not this application. Hold on. Don't use zoom as much. So give me a second. So share. How do I just share my screen, not a document? All right. I don't know. So okay, so.
As long as, gentlemen, as long as it's in your report, you don't have to take the time. I, I was just curious as to.
Yeah, so, so basically, well, I'll just, I'll just jump there real quick because it's, it's an easy page jump here. So the facility currently uses anywhere from 300 to 800 KW, which is your electric demand. We would size this equipment to meet your base load of 300 or so. So it would not run the entire building. Is the short, long and short of it, it would basically be able to run like a half to a third during peak load. That said, the bigger issue would be the ability to run the generation and isolate the loads that you'd want to serve with it. So if your electric power from the grid went off, right, you could in theory run the, the onsite generation. But you would have to have the switch gear in place and the switching in place to be able to shut off circuits, much like an electric, a generator, right? The generator always has circuits that it's dedicated to and has the switch gear and so forth. So you'd have to put that infrastructure in. That could be costly. But we, you know, we could certainly evaluate it, but it would, it would certainly be above and beyond the cost that we've identified currently.
Yeah. Let me ask you, Commissioner Levin has been in the electrical business for 35 years. He's very familiar with the switching gear and all that stuff. But my question would be, could we size this project to include everything across the street, including the jail?
Yes.
That's, I guess that would be my question because we could co-generate, you know, at some point, depending on each of what those numbers look like.
Sure.
And we wouldn't have to be running our own, our backup generators as they are now. We could probably convert, eliminate the generators themselves.
Correct. If I could, if I could add something to this for context, our annual electricity bill for the entire county facilities, right around the cost of the installation on this, about 750 to 800,000. That's what we pay for electricity right now. We're also looking at 20 year old boilers in the jail and we have 20 year old boilers in Riverside. And those are going to need to be addressed in the next five years probably. At a cost of 300,000 currently for replacement.
Yeah.
If we can generate our own power here.
Right. But if we can generate our own, if we make it big enough to at least generate that power for that side of the street, I'd be curious about, because hot water usage is always going to be with us, no matter what goes on in those villages. You're going to have that. So the heat, so the recovery of, of the, you know, hot water, hot water generation, the heat, you know, recovery.
Right. And. And taking the, taking the load off the boilers.
Right.
The suite that you see is, is solely really from air conditioning units in Riverside because of the limitations of the building.
Sure.
We're not allowed to install P-TAC units, et cetera, in those window units, 7,500 BTUs incredibly energy demanding, especially in the summertime.
Right, right. Well, I'd be interested in looking at something like that. I think that that would be in our long-term interest. I don't know if you gentlemen could, working with Dutch would ramp that up, but you, you, you kind of get an idea where I'm, where I'm going, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It would cure a lot of problems that we have right now and address the, the infrastructure going forward. Infrastructure that we have coming down the line.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Looking to generate our own power with power cost.
Yep. And currently, currently the emergency circuits, when we go onto generator, run the facility. We only have the back line in the kitchen, which would exceed the capacity of our current generator, not on emergency backup power. That's the only item in the, in the rest on this, not on power.
Okay.
Yeah, so that.
Go ahead.
That bleeds into my next point pretty, pretty nicely. So I do want to be able to run through the rest of the opportunities. Some of them are a little, little less exciting. But generally speaking, this is the first step of what we would consider a multi-step process. This is a high level evaluation. The next step would be a detailed engineering study where we would pull in contractors, get firm pricing, get more details around, yeah, what can we serve, you know, what, what are the options around the co-gen? And if this is something that you're of interest, then that would be my recommendation is to pursue an engineering study. Those studies are cost shared between the utilities and the customer, typically 50 50. And would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, depending on the scope of the study, say 20 to 40K. So you'd be on the hook for say 10 to 20K to perform that kind of study, at which point we would be able to dig in further. So that's sort of the next step that we want to talk about. I was going to wait till the end, but since it was relevant to the CHP discussion, I'll just throw that out there now.
That's fine. Well, I, I don't have a problem with that. We just have to. Commissioner Levin and I have been talking privately about moving in this direction along with some solar capacity, which, which we have a federal grant for. So probably a combination of all these things would really set up a, a gray scenario for the future for the, for the county and have a particular payback that, that was, you know, 20, 30 years ago, we didn't have the technology we have today. Back then it was a 50 year payback, but when you look at this type of payback, it certainly would be worth it to taxpayers of the county.
Absolutely. My understanding too, and I'm not an accountant, but my understanding is that you would be eligible for the investment tax credit too? That still exists going forward. Onsite generation was actually included in the most recent bill. My understanding is the solar's going away.
Going away in July of next year, as I understand it.
Yep. But onsite generation is not. That's also.
Right. The commercial piece of it, I understand remains. Co-generation, the commercial piece in the big beautiful bill that was passed by Congress, I'm still trying to get some details on all that, but that's what I, that was my last understanding of it. I don't know if that's, you gentlemen can shed any light on that. I know the solar piece goes away next June or July, tax incentive for the private sector.
Correct.
Which creates some high burn, but that's, that's okay. It is what it is.
Yep.
Could, could we build this thing big enough to sell back to the community?
I believe the answer is no, from a net metering, EverSource interconnection perspective. But Jack, do you know that answer for sure?
Yeah, I think the, the generation is, is capped at, at one megawatt for, for customers. So there would be a limit there, but you know, if net metering is something that you want to investigate, you know, with the solar and, and this generation, I can absolutely loop Greg Ray into the conversation. He's longtime service account executive at EverSource and he can get answers to those questions. And just to note on the, on the study, by the time it's done, you know, we'll have a lot of information from your gas usage to your electric usage, you know, we'll have other contractors and vendors, like Jeremy said, looking at it and vetting it. So by the time it's over, you'll have, you know, multiple eyes on it. It'll be fairly accurate. And a note on the EverSource side, that, that's the most value we can provide in terms of this energy efficiency program is incentivizing these onsite generation projects. I would still recommend as, you know, as we go through this report, to complete the low, the low hanging fruit measures, like the lighting incentives are gone in Massachusetts. I would say, you know, convert all of your lighting to LED as soon as you can, because they might be going away in New Hampshire, stuff like that.
Next week, we do have.
Solar media.
Yeah, we do have the solar media. I hope Diane mentioned it.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Perfect.
Could I ask one? I, I know that, you know, you, I know you guys have developed a lot of the, you know, the information. Could we, could I ask you to resend that to us again? I know you brought it when you came in, but if you could resend that to Janet, that would be great. And we'll make sure we distribute that to everybody here so that, you know, we can tie all those things together. But you know, your report, when, when we met was tremendous. I mean, it, it gave me everything that I wanted, which was the, you know, the initial cost and, and I really care about the, the two end columns, right? The initial cost and the years of payback.
Yep.
And you guys did a really great job at, at, you know, outlining that and, and, you know, the items were self-explanatory. Fortunately, one of the commissioners is a, a great electrical contractor who understands, you know, these things. And George's life experience in running the marina has given him great, and his experience in Dover's given him a great sense of this. So you're, you're really talking to an informed audience, I guess, is, is the best way for me to put it.
Excellent. So Ray, we'll reach out. I don't know if we have Janet's email, but we'll, we'll reach out and definitely happy to resend this.
John Cashel has.
What, John has Janet's email.
Perfect.
Are we, are we, gentlemen, are we, as, as a result of EverSource's programming, are we considered just one customer, generally speaking? The reason why I bring this up is because the courthouse itself, if we could build a big enough plant or two separate plants, one to run one side of the street, one to run the other, as an example with natural gas and electrical production. I don't know whether it'd be worth it with the courthouse with the retrofit we just did, but. I don't know whether it'd be worth it to, with the courthouse, with the retrofit we just did, but. Uh, it's something I'd like to have us look at, and I, I, I would assume that the engineers. The engineering firm that we would be sharing a cost and could look at that as well as. Part of that potential to see whether or not it would be worth doing both sides or not doing both sides, you know, there's a. And, and an economic analysis that would have to be done in that. In that way, you know where I'm go, where I'm going with this?
Yes, yes, exactly.
I think we could do one plant to do.
Well, maybe they'll do one plant to do both sides, it, like, well, you would know about the switching and the.
Yeah.
The, the electrical and.
Or three, or three small ones.
Or three small ones, right, it just depends.
What does it cost?
Yeah, it just depends on cost and. That analysis, so would, would that analysis be done by the, the engineering firm that we would be hiring, or that be done by you guys?
So if you, if you chose to do the engineering. Uh, study that I mentioned earlier, which we, we'd be happy to conduct, yes, we, we'd be happy to propose those options. Uh, what we would first do is want to understand, you know, what your goals are, um, because we can't present fifty options, we'd want to present, you know, three to five. And, yeah, we, that's, that's definitely in the wheelhouse, we, the whole goal of the engineering study is to present you a menu of options that you can pursue and implement. Over time. So, um. Yeah, I do have.
Okay.
I do want to get through the rest, um, and I think, yeah, if, if you're interested in the onsite generation, that's definitely the next best step.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna gloss over some of the, some of the sort of simpler ones, like, you know, pipe insulation, pretty straightforward. Uh, demand control kitchen ventilation, um, is, is, can be a great opportunity where you've got. Um, your kitchen hoods are running manually, and you can put controls on those to run those more efficiently. Um, you've got some fin tube radiation, electric radiation, switching over to heat pumps, pretty, pretty small, you know, opportunity there, so not, not a big deal. Uh, so that, that's the high level of what we had at, at Riverside and Alms. And again, jump in if you've got questions. Um. At the Department of Corrections, we had the similar retro-commissioning opportunity. Um, we also have ozone laundry syste- system utilization. Uh, pretty low uh payback if that system could be sort of, it's already installed, just needs to be uh recommissioned. Uh, refrigeration controls, uh, are a good opportunity, again, fairly low cost. Uh, variable primary hot water is putting uh VFD on the hot water pump and, and some controls. Other good uh low payback opportunity. Uh, catwalk heating optimization, another low cost, but there's, I believe, electric baseboards in the catwalk. So there's some optimization there, and there are descriptions for all of these in the report that you could read uh offline as well. Um. That outlines the details. Uh, so that, that would be the Department of Corrections, and then over at the courthouse. Courthouse, as, as you mentioned, is fairly new, uh, and so the only opportunity there that would really be worth pursuing initially would be the retro-commissioning of the controls. Uh, we didn't break out the onsite generation, uh, but again, that certainly is an option to serve the campus. Uh, with either one or multiple plants and so forth. Uh, and then, uh, I believe lastly, yes, lastly, uh, Hyder House. Uh, again, retro-commissioning, smaller opportunity at Hyder House, because it's a smaller facility. Again, pipe installation, fairly straightforward. Uh, condensing boiler, this, this end-of-life statement here means that when the boiler dies, and it fails. Replace it with a condensing boiler, we don't recommend that you replace it now, existing boiler works just fine, but when it does fail. Definitely reach out to Unitil uh for support on a, on a new boiler uh with condensing technology. Uh, heat pump water heater, uh, these can be fairly cost-effective, uh, they're, they're a heap, are you guys familiar with, with heat pump water heaters, is that concept? Makes sense? Okay, great. Uh, and then lastly, variable speed, uh, hot water differential control, um. That building, again, would benefit from a, from a VFD on the hot water pumps to uh further reduce electrical use. Um, and then. I, I don't, I don't notice if it's worth the time, but I just do want to highlight that when you guys get the copy of this. Uh, there is, down at the very bottom. A whole other list of, of opportunities, these are, these tend to either be low-hanging fruit, like vending mizers, pretty simple. Uh, more pipe insulation, Energy Star appliances. Uh, but the bottom line, I don't, the reason I want to show this is that there is, there's a lot of opportunity at the county to cost-effectively reduce energy use. Um, and so the measures at the top, the ones that the, 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 in the tables that we just showed are, are basically what we would recommend going after first. Um. The ones at the end are sort of additional opportunities that you could pursue as well. Uh, or they're just, they're simple and easy, you could do them in-house. Um, but there's definitely, you know, there's another, what, sixteen options uh at the end here? So the long story short is that there's definitely opportunity, we're here to support you. Um, we like to say you have, you have three options going forward, one is doing nothing, that we hope you don't do. Um, the second is sort of self-directed, you know, your facilities team could just go solicit quotes, proposals from contractors. And submit those to either Jack or Matt from Unitil or, or us. Uh, and get qualified for an incentive. Uh, the biggest thing that I can't stress enough, because we see it day in and day out, is that if you go buy a piece of equipment. And install it. And then ask for an incentive. Most often the times, it's, the answer's gonna be no. You have to let the utility know before you buy the equipment. Um. And get sort of a pre-approved incentive before you buy it. So with that, I've got a few more minutes, I think, for, for, for more Q and A, uh, and next steps discussion.
Now, yeah, the answer, does the PU, is the PUC, how does this, I'm just kind of curious with the dynamic of the, of the lay of the land is now with Unitil and you, and EverSource. Is the PUC uh requiring them to do these types of programming, I know they used to do that in the past, it's been a while since I looked at all this stuff, so I'm just curious.
That, that's a fantastic question, so yes, this is a ratepayer-funded program. So there is a line item on your electric and gas bill, I believe it's the systems benefit charge. That. Is, is, is how you pay into this program, and our goal is to help you get the money that you've paid in back. Um, it is a regulated program by the PUC. Um, there was a disruption to the program, uh, what was it, a couple of years ago? Uh, where the PUC sort of pushed back. Uh, and it was actually great, because it wasn't great during that time, the outcome was great, because it actually became a law in the state. That the NH saves program is to exist. Uh, because there was some pushback by one of the PUC members. Um, that resulted in a temporary shutdown of the program. Uh, but it actually, the program has come back, and it's actually stronger now than it used to be. It used to be a one-year program. And you'd only have budgets and goals for one year, now it's a three-year program. Um, so we have a lot more flexibility, we have a lot more stability, uh, and assurance that the program is gonna continue on, uh, going forward.
Okay, that's, that was my next question, what, in the, in the political environment that we're in, is this stuff gonna go away sooner than later, I mean, that's what I, that's. That's the big question, that's my first question. Uh, do you have any? Idea about the regulatory process right now with, with the president administration, whether they want this stuff to go, go away or not?
No, so, so there's no federal impact on this program, it is merely state-level. Uh, in the state, this again became a law passed by the House and the, and the Senate. But it got bipartisan support at the state legislative level. Um, when the disruption occurred. The, the legislature pushed and told the PUC, thou shalt have an NH saves program, now they put cost restrictions on it, right, we don't want ratepayers. Rates going up dramatically, so the program remains, you know, at budget levels that were consistent with the past, we don't expect the program to, to balloon and grow. You know, like, like Massachusetts has, uh, but we do expect it to be around for the foreseeable future. Um. Matt, Jack, you guys have anything to add on that, that you might know that I don't?
No, I think that you said it perfectly, Jeremy, and, and to, to Jeremy's point about when it stopped, and then, uh, you know, the state stepped in. It was unanimous support, so it, the backlash was, hey, this is a super important program, we need to have this out there. Um, the, the PUC guidance is to make sure that it's cost-effective, and so when you see like these, uh, these payback, uh, you know, that are listed on each project. That means that. We don't want to be spending money that it's gonna take forever to get that, that energy savings returned, so. You know, for uh both EverSource and Unitil, you know, we need to make sure that when we're looking at projects, that the incentives that we give are going to be recovered. You know, with the benefits value, at least what we put out for the cost of that incentive. So that's the stuff that will guide, and that's why, to, to Jeremy's earlier point, let us know before you start going down the road of a, of an initiative, because we need to then say, all right, well, we can only give. This amount of incentive dollars before you go ahead and hire a contractor to do any of these energy conservation measures. Um, and then the other piece, I would say that's an important to, to call out that has changed over the years. Uh, the funding for these uh programs are decoupled, meaning that. You know, when you see a project like onsite generation, and you're like, well, why would EverSource give us money? Uh, to generate our own power when they make money by selling power, uh, so the, that whole revenue stream is, is decoupled, meaning that. How, however they uh get all of their costs recovered for the, uh, the power lines that bring electricity to different customers, that's. A whole different funding budget from, uh, what Jack will oversee as far as getting these initiatives, uh, incentives, so it's, it's important to know that, like. Even though it looks a little squirrely, when you kind of think of it from that perspective, you know, it's not the utility's uh role to make money on selling power. It's what does it cost to get you that power, and make sure that that cost is all recovered, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the, one other quick question, and I heard earlier you, you said that the co-generation. Uh, was capped at one megawatt? Is that by statute, did I hear that correctly in the beginning?
Jack?
Yeah. Yeah, um. I think that's for all commercial and industrial customers in the state of New Hampshire, like, like municipal solar is five megawatts, and. I. I think because you're a municipality, you would be eligible for the five megawatts, but anyone that's not a municipal customer. Um. Would, would be capped at one megawatt, I'm not sure. Where that stands for. Um. A, a TCO gen onsite generation, you know, I've. I don't know, I've only heard the five megawatt municipal solar being a cap, um, so I can, I can ask our account executive that, whether the five megawatt. Applies to any sort of generation within the municipality, and, and we'll get back to you.
That'd be great, that's, that's, that's an important question.
Yeah, the, the one thing I will throw out, and, and obviously Jeremy or whoever does a, a more deeper dive into the co-generation um opportunities. It is very important from a cost-effectiveness and, and operational standpoint, that you're. Uh, sizing for your thermal needs. And less so for your, um, your electric output needs, um, so when you, if you put in like a one megawatt, um, can be combined heat and power plant. It's gonna want to generate a lot more, um, domestic hot water, or some type of offloading of that heat. Then you can probably use effectively, so if you don't match that thermal load. You start to lose that cost-effectiveness as far as, hey, we put in something that's way oversized, and there's nothing to do with that waste heat in the middle of the summertime. So you want to find that kind of good balance, and I think that that analysis will, will tell a lot to, you know, how, how much should you size this thing?
Yeah, the, the caveat there, Matt, is that if they went the linear generator route, that's not the case, right, because then there's no heat recovery. Um. And the, the reality is that with the, with the IR, with the, um, thirty percent investment tax credit, both of these technologies are very cost-effective. And it just comes down to. Um, either sizing CHP to meet your thermal load, or sizing a onsite generation to meet your electric demand. Um, you certainly wouldn't want to have something that's so big that it never runs at full capacity.
Yeah, or maybe a combination of the two, right?
Yeah, or a combination of the two, yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Well, gentlemen, I don't want to shut, shut you down, but I've got a long agenda here today, so. I appreciate your efforts on, on behalf of, of the county, uh, I find some of the work you've done is very, is fascinating, and, uh. We're certainly gonna take a hard look at all these things, and, uh. So far from what I see, and, and through our discussion, that I, I support a hundred percent of it, I know my colleague does, we've talked about. Any, any kind of energy savings that has at least a, you know, a ten-year payback or less, we're gonna be on board with, so. Uh. You know, I look forward to working with you in the future, and, uh, you're gonna send that report along to Ray and.
He's gonna send it to Jen, and Jen will distribute, I have it, but it's, it'll just be easier if it comes to her electronically.
Yeah.
And that way it'll be easy for her to distribute.
Well, I. Do you have any other questions for us then, gentlemen, I, I appreciate all your efforts, I said earlier, and, uh, looking forward to working with yous.
Yes, likewise, I appreciate you guys taking the time, I know you guys are busy and have a lot on your agenda. So Ray, uh, we'll follow up directly with you to discuss the priorities on if and how we move forward with a, with an engineering study, does that sound good?
That sounds great.
Excellent, thank, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Very much, take care.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen.
There's a lot of, a lot of neat stuff in there, Doug, we gotta look at.
Yeah, the other, the other part is, is that we've, I've met with these gentlemen before, so, you know, I have the, the detail, the report is very detailed. I had a different, uh, I will tell you right up front, I had a different concept of payback, I, I had seven years or less.
That's fine, seven.
And I was looking, you know. More, I was more focused on the low-hanging fruit, to three-year, the four-year, the five-year, you know, that kind of thing, so.
It might be worth it though. For us to look at.
If, if we bundled it together.
Together and went back and get authorization.
And bonded it, right, that's correct. And use the savings to pay the bond back.
That's right.
Is, is the.
Yes, that's the way to do it.
Is the way to do it.
Right.
Um. I haven't calculated it out yet, um, I haven't worked with Diane yet to calculate the bonding, I wanted, I wanted you gentlemen to look at every one of the projects. And say, you know, yes, this looks good, yes, this, this doesn't, this.
I think we need to take some bond proceeds and move forward with the engineering study that we're talking about, because we do that. You know what I'm saying, Ray, that, that, doing the exercise now isn't.
The other, the other one thing too, is that, that the superintendent pointed out, uh, which, you know, had crossed our mind is. I would like to in, invite you source in to, to the next meeting to get, um, natural gas cost projections.
Right.
Because a lot of this is based on, okay, this is electricity now, this is the natural gas now, okay, that's great, what happens? Give, give me, you know. Because there's a lot of, uh, fighting about pipelines and bringing more gas down to the area and all that kind of stuff, so I don't want to, uh, go into this and then find out. You know, the natural gas is going up and like.
What's gonna, what's gonna make a difference with this is multiple co-generation, so if we have. Which is another issue we gotta talk about, which is next week, which is the solar piece, so.
That, that, they're, so those experts are, I'm gonna ask you to flex your meaning a little bit, because they're.
Eleven o'clock.
Well, yeah, one moves in Alaska, so, you know, instead of having them get up at like four in the morning, we're gonna ask, uh. We're gonna ask them, gentlemen, to come in for an eleven o'clock meeting with them, um, and, and, because remember, we, Diane and I have met with the solar people. Half a dozen times, and, and it was, because I wanted them to have a product ready for you guys, so you don't have to sit through what we sat through.
Right.
All the times that we've met through, that we've met with them, so I think, hopefully, uh, they're, they're ready now to, to make a presentation to you.
We're on a time crunch with that, right? Another, another piece I'd like to add to this, everybody to keep in mind, is, uh, if we do nothing, we're looking at. Uh, some generators that are fifty years old, we have one that's forty-five years old, and I have one that's thirty-three years old. Uh, we have transformers that are problematic, transfer switches, and, uh, being able to. Remedy all that without the additional cost of trying to replace that going forward.
I'm with you, I, I'm with you a hundred percent.
We got a number of, we need a thing of five million dollars to fix that stuff.
We need. Multiple co-generation, we need to get natural gas co-generation, and we need the solar co-generation, we had both of them working in concert, okay, over a course of time. That would be the smart thing for us to do. The bigger problem we have, well, I'd say a bigger problem, is if we want the private sector to, to. To do the solar, as an example. I'll, we'll, we'll find this out next week.
We'll find this out next week, I think you're gonna find that we're gonna be able to acquire. Your same percentage of incentive. They've now made it so that governments can acquire that incentive and aren't forced to use. I'm, and I'm not suggesting we shouldn't, I'm saying, I, I know, one of the things we've tasked. Um, this company with. Is, is coming up with options for us about using private. Or running it ourselves.
Well, their tax incentive goes away next July, the, the tax incentive for the private sector, the thirty percent. tax incentive goes away next July. Okay, that was in the big beautiful bill that was passed by Congress. So whatever we're going to do, we've got to do it. We we can't, you know, mess around with it too long. We've got we've got to make because it's it's well, from my perspective, I don't know, but you could change my mind. The private sector owning the solar file would be my first choice.
Nine months.
Yeah, and and lease and give us a payback, you know, at least lease the land from us. But if the thirty percent tax credit goes away from them, how many players are you going to have by next July?
Well, the other part of this is is that, as you know, we we got this grant and then the federal government took it away.
They took us away, then they got, I know.
Then they gave it back to us. So
People left.
And, you know, some people left because they didn't, you know, some people left this entity because they thought, well, we don't have any work. And now it's back. So, you know, yes, the delay is 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 regrettable, but there isn't anything that we could do about it. There's nothing we could do about it. I asked at Diane's recommendation, I asked if we could fund the balance of the the work that they hadn't done ourselves. Because it would be worth it, you know, because I had no idea it was going to get restored. And they said, no, we couldn't. But now now that it's restored, you know, we're back on track. But again, we lost some time as a result.
Okay, well, we'll get the meeting next week. They'll probably answer some of our questions, give us those options. Doug, you heard basically, I want to fund that. I know Sean reasons, because I'm assuming that on the engineering study that you just mentioned, you supported it. I want to I want to get moving on that engineering study. Some of the later. You know, I want to look at both sides of the street on the cogeneration then.
Sure. I think currently the entire facility is about one megawatt for usage, I believe.
Right, right. But if we can go up to five with a combination, you know, that's when the payback will be with 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 the solar piece by in fact. But the the experts will tell us that next week. A lot of expert, but I know enough above to be scary. So we'll let them. That's what we have them for.
We're gonna tell you.
Okay, all right.
Maybe we do some of the so that we're not keeping people.
Yeah, I know. We get the CAC grant next, so why don't we take that up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great, gentlemen. I know you have a lot to get to, but this is the state funding grant for twenty six, twenty seven. This amount is nineteen thousand. That goes directly to all three staff salaries, a portion of each of that. It is a lower amount this year, only because, as you may remember, we were in front of you a few months ago to have some documentation signed for an extension because they gave us such a big amount two years prior with a reduced amount of time to spend it and no guidance. So that's why it's a bit of a reduced amount, but we are still able to allocate the funds as we had initially hoped.
That's simple.
Yeah, simple.
I have the documents here for you.
Okay. Motion, you want to make a motion, Sean, to authorize and the second CAC grant? I'll second it and the motion unanimous, Sean, on that?
Yes. Okay. We'll we'll give you the signed documents.
Absolutely. I know you have a lot to do.
Yeah, so we'll give you the signed documents today.
Perfect.
Before they before they leave.
I'm sorry, we held you up.
No problem, no problem. Have a great day.
You too.
Do you need anything from me?
No, I'll get these guys to sign. I think the only thing you're going to need is a resume. Yeah, so I'll send this to you and then everything else I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The one thing I wanted to mention, the next item.
Yeah.
We took the old grant for Children in Motion.
Yeah.
And
The old lease?
Yeah, the old lease. I'm sorry, the old lease for Children in Motion. We sent it to Primex, you know, just well, the law's changed and I mean, that lease was a renewable lease for the last twenty years.
Twenty years, right.
So as you know, there's a retirement and the business is moving over to two of the employees. So we we wanted to keep the same lease in place because it it gives them a lower rent, but gives and our employees an incentive
Right.
To keep their children there. So they save some money. And you know, that that seems to work out really well. And the area, I know that Dougie's kept it in in good shape.
Yeah, they're they're a great tenant.
You know, they
No issues over the Zero issues. The building has been updated and sealed thanks to the capital from last year.
Yeah, we did roofers soften.
Yeah, we replaced some air conditioning units and a lot of water damage and stuff out there. But no, they ask for very little. Marcy funds anything that she needs or adds moves and changes. And yeah, they've been a good good.
So we we have no reason to think that these two ladies who've worked for her won't be the same. And Dougie has a good relationship with them.
Yeah, they're fantastic. They just go downstairs and
So all we're doing is swapping swapping names.
Swapping.
So I'd ask you maybe at the public meeting to approve the lease and again, we'll sign the documents after.
Yeah. So motion, we'll do that.
Make a motion.
Okay. Don, move it. I'll second it. The motion unanimous that we approved that.
And I said, like I said, Primax has reviewed it for us.
Yeah.
So so we're we're in good shape in in that in that respect.
Good. Glad it's continuing.
Yeah.
It's great service to the employees.
One thing I'd suggest, Mr. Chairman, is is I know this will be a little logistical pain in the neck, but if we could go into non-public session for for ten minutes or so
Yeah.
and and just get an update.
The chief, the chief's on here.
Yeah, the chief's behind you, but we'll we're gonna we're even gonna ask the chief to leave for a minute. This is on a separate subject.
Yeah.
So if we could just, it's it's our health insurance and I don't want to do it publicly because it's gonna impact our our contract negotiations. So if we could root everybody out, Diane, please stay. And scrunch the agenda a little.
A little for me.
Little little tight, so tighter than I I should have.
We've outlined the area down there, right?
Yeah.
Are you happy with it?
Yeah, so we're we're in great shape. By the way, everybody that we work with come from outside. You know, just fantastic to work with, very responsive and cooperative. It's gonna work out perfect. They I do have a an update on the timeline. So this would be the building that we would be building. So right now, the
This building is temporary. Is this a temporary building? Is this a
It is. It's not. It doesn't have a foundation. All it is is containers that are all bolted together.
Okay.
So, yeah, it could be moved at any time, but, you know, it's gonna last years and years and years and years.
Right.
So the S U R will be doing the site work for us. They're gonna they're gonna come in, take all the, you know, topsoil off, push it back and push all the stumps, everything back, come in and put, they do a six by sixty pad in the center. And that would where that's where that building would sit. And then about a hundred and eighty by hundred and eighty, they put excavator put gravel in the road filings that become hard when you they're wet and they roll them around it. So so it'd be nice and hard. And they're gonna they're gonna start that as early as next week. And then the containers roll for bid. Right now, the bid comes back like today and they have to go for the next council to get a word to bid. And then like three or four weeks after that, the container will come rolling in and we start stacking them. We have talked to Rochester in Summersworth and made sure that they knew that they're welcome to use it. And they said that when we do our work party and do some work out there, they'll supply some people and come out and meet us out there and do it too.
I was reading that you guys need to extend a water line at some point.
Yeah, we will. So that'll be after the winter. So the the hydrant's up on the corner. We're gonna, it's like five hundred feet away, so which is five hundred. We're gonna run a four inch hose, which we run for a fire, leave it on the ground there for this year. And then right after winter, we would bring a plan back to dig and put a water line down and put a hydrant right out there. Yeah, I had the same thing with electricity. We'd run a generator for now running any electricity we need and then work with ever source or whatever to try to get power back down there.
Okay, the talk was on the the old treatment plant building, they wanted to use it for storage.
So the brown building.
Yeah.
Doug and I talked, we don't know the status of asbestos or mold in it. We did open up, take a look at it, I'd go with vehicle windows, may have had cleaned out, get like John Turner, someone come in, do some sampling and see if it's worth
May not be worth.
Doing something.
It might not be worth it.
Yeah, and it may not. It may not be. It depends on.
You can put another, you can put a container there or something.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a big deal. It's just sitting there kind of decaying. We'd use it or get rid of it probably, you know what I mean? But if it's not feasible, then we can talk about knocking out that something and giving you rid of it.
George, you mean, Mr. Dreisaitz?
I just, I think I missed the beginning of the conversation. What is this for?
It's for training for fire departments, for the county, all the fire departments in the county.
Everybody be invited.
Right.
Fire, firefighters, all for it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, okay, so you can talk to FX.
Will I be will I be correct? A chief that there might be some police training also?
Yes, this is in conjunction with Stratford County SWAT team, SRT team.
Yeah.
So they've been, they ran out building committee. We've gone out and looked at other facilities. So they'd be they'd be doing search and rescue training, hostage training. And then they would be using some gas a couple of times a year and after they use gas in it, we hose it out. And and then they can
Yeah. Also, this is
And there'd be some joint training for hostage situations where they have hostages in the fire in the building and stuff, so we're doing some
It's really exciting too and and, you know, maybe, I mean, I haven't spoken to the superintendent, but maybe as time goes on, Chris, too, there some of the hostage pieces, some of your staff could benefit from
Absolutely.
From observations. I mean, that's the biggest thing you worry about in a jail, right, Chief, is, you know, is is the number of correctional number of inmates in insurgent situation grabbing one of the correctional officers. So if if nothing else, we could get basic, you know, this is what you do to till the experts get there.
Yeah, and certainly the building would be available to you to use it for whatever you want at any time that you want. So if you want to use it for so be more than welcome to use it. And the the only other piece that I think we probably address at some point is when you leave the site to the low point that it washes out a little bit.
Yeah.
I think after winter, we'd probably get three services down there and talk about putting a culvert on it there or something and fixing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even short steel bridge.
Yeah, something that
That's always been a problem area there.
Wouldn't wash out because that way we also have access to it, but.
Yeah, I mean, we we do manage to get down there, you know, all year long, but you're right. I mean, it's a weak area, Chief.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
Yeah. The other thing after the after the winter, we'd be looking at trying to get a dry hydrant, which is a pipe that goes down into the river. So we'd have a second water source down there. So we'd have to go through the DES or something to 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 put that in the river, but we would do that as well.
That area, that weak area was the way it was repaired initially did go through the DES.
Okay.
Just so you know, you know.
Yeah.
So we have, in other words, we have no qualms about welcoming down there. It's it what was done there was at their design.
Yeah. The but we can talk about that and come back with doing something if you need be there or something. You want to speak to, you spoke to FX? FX, you have the book drafted up that you want to use.
I I have not. I I wanted to wait till you gentlemen approved, you know, the kind of the area. I know that you would ask me. And and the city has taken it one step further. I mean, you, we had Troy, you know, just kind of
I might have mistaken it.
Sticking it out, but it's it's taken out even better now. And I and we do recognize there's some wood in the way and stuff. We've contacted our wood person who's agreed to just come in and move it. And and I redirected Troy and Matthew to work on that and get as much wood out of that area, you know, by wood deliveries. But but we still will need to relocate something, which is a a subject for another time. Because what we what we might ultimately be looking to do, boss, is to actually relocate our whole wood, the whole wood situation over time. You know, probably, I know it's gonna take us a little while. But we, there's another area. If you keep
Below it to the left?
Put your thinking cap on, boss.
The left.
You're going down the road.
Yeah, you go to the left.
Go to, you go past the monument.
Yeah.
And and go to the left.
Yeah.
And it and there's two possible areas. The superintendent and I drove down there yesterday. And there's an area where we have we have to widen the road. That's not a problem. We can we can do that ourselves. And then there there's an area where we could go on the left, but it would require quite a bit of work. Or there's, if you keep going straight, there's a field there that's just about as large as this.
It's often, it's kind of separated from the other field.
It it well, it is. You can get there. But but the advantage to that is we, the wood, you know, the the community service people that cut wood under the direction of of those two employees, you know, for the sake of cap and for the sake of
Well, that was the question I was gonna talk about, the low income production of wood for those. So we we can relocate it to the left.
Well, my point is that that there's options that I'd like to show you about relocating it. We'd like to drive you down there and and look at those options about relocating that area. So eventually, Chief, we get out of that whole area down there. Now, that might take us a while because there's a huge, there's hundreds of cords there.
Yeah. Dougie and I just, I mean, you know, the way you're burning now, that wouldn't affect us whatsoever.
Yeah, that was one of the other questions I had.
We're planning on bringing some of that hard pack almost up to that, so it's harder for your and certainly the 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 machine team has, he wants to park pack, park them on the hard pack stuff that probably better for him and stuff. Yeah, we expect that. Not a problem at all. And then the log found it is not a
Yeah, I just didn't want It's all my, it's all my splitters. I gave them the I provided them the county. The county uses my stuff.
But yeah, so I don't see us, I see us working together and not being in conflict at all.
No, I I don't see it at all either. I'm, we're just trying to move some wood out of your way, you know, we could
And just that that stack that's there and then
Right.
Piles of some good split wood that I'm sure you don't want to lose. Other than that, all the stumps.
I think you'll find that that split wood stuff, about half of that's gone already and the other half will be gone shortly.
Yeah. And then I did, Commissioner, I did send you a draft of an MOU that the city put together. That you that you should have an email. I have a copy of it here if you you want it.
When did you, when did you, when did you ship that out?
Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I think. There's a, I can re I can resend it.
No, it's all right. You got a copy.
It's a a draft that the city put together.
Okay.
Sounds great.
For discussion.
All right.
Well, I think Sean and I are good with this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good with it. I think it's gonna be a great asset for the Stratford County. Are we gonna be in this MOU? I I got some detail of the issues I can discuss.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem at all, whatever you need.
Okay.
This is exciting, Chief.
Yeah, it's it's it is super exciting for for the city. The city council's super excited about it. The money, the overall money was approved last night. We had a, we programmed some money and it was all done last night, so.
And land, you know, is useless to the county. I mean, I don't mean that. I mean, every piece of land is good piece of land. But you using it is a much better use.
Right.
This is than the county would ever have it for.
We've been talking about this a dope of a
For years. And then and the SRT team, the police SRT team was going parallel. Parallel pass and then so we joined together and it's been a great, a great partnership. And then when I called Rochester in in Summersworth, they were ecstatic about it.
And and the wood vendor that the county buys wood from is a friend of the superintendent's. You know, we shopped around and and he gave us the best price, but he's willing to come and move. You know.
Yeah, move the wood out of the way.
Move that wood out of the way, that that's any question. And and I think there's only probably one truckload left. Chris, that's in the way. I mean, we have hundreds of cords on the other end. And we'll work off those, but the goal is to get the commissioners to approve the other area that we have down there and 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 any new wood that comes in goes, will be put in that area. So once we get rid of what's there, that whole area will be available to you.
But if the if the burn pile stays down there, especially when when the hydrant comes down there, it just makes it for an even safer
Yeah, no, it's not a Not a problem at all.
Even safer. You generate a fair amount of pallets.
Yep.
I would like to talk to you about getting those pallets so we can run them and build them. So
Sure.
Better than that.
What we want to do is put some old furniture in it. Yeah, so that's, thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. This is huge for the area. It really is for training.
Well, this is exciting for
Yeah.
Really advise this opportunity.
Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
She's sorry we're late.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about the cancellation.
Thank you. Oh, last, no, not a problem at all. And whatever you want to use it for, feel free.
Yeah, I appreciate Yeah, I appreciate it.
We would coordinate all the time.
I guess we're good with that. All right, we've got Tori Johnson and Nick Tumpus here to talk to us. For a few minutes about Air Shield and some other things.
You also have here the long-term care.
I, I added that.
You added that?
I added that.
Because following this meeting, I am going to Concord for the initial meeting of that committee that was set up.
I, I added that, Nick, mostly because I wanted to stress with, with somebody that could speak to that committee with some amount of authority. Is that all of the federal money that we draw. Is gone, would be gone.
And, and equip and pro share.
And equipment pro share would be gone. And those were all programs that, you know, were certainly there when, when you were there. It might have, and some of it started when you were there. And, and our best estimate, and, and I, I think it's, I think it's a conservative estimate. Is sixty million. And, and I actually believe it's, I, I would, I would be more comfortable in saying sixty to seventy million. Than I would just saying it at sixty. That would be gone because it's unavailable under, under managed care program.
Yeah, and today's meeting is really, by the way, my name is Nick Compass. And this is Tori Jensen. So the purpose of today's meeting is really just the setup of, of the, of the committee. And there are four people, Senator Revard, Representative Lucas. A, a Representative Markil, M A R K I L L. And Representative Kovalt. So those are the four that are on the, the committee. And the, you look at the, the components that are listed in HB two, House Bill two. It's an incredible amount of work and detail that's involved in that. And, and according to the HB two, they want to report on it before October first. Of this year. So. I, I'm not sure they can get organized that quickly in order to, in order to do it. So it will be, it will be interesting to, to weigh in on that. There's a parallel effort that is related but unrelated. And that is an effort by the hospitals in the state. To work with the nursing homes because you have hospitals that can't discharge people into nursing homes. Because of staff shortages and so forth. Not bed availability, it's staff shortages and vice versa. You have people in a nursing home that can't be discharged into a hospital because the hospital doesn't have the bed capability. Because they, they have people in the beds that.
Don't need to be.
They don't need to be there. They could be elsewhere. So there's a, there's a study committee that is being set up on that. And it's, it is a, it's a huge list of people that are going to be on that. And because I'm on the State Commission on Aging, I've asked to be in, involved in, in some fashion. So I, so I'll, I'll have a little bit better an idea in terms of how that's going to play out. I don't know what the next step is in terms of the meeting on that is going to be. But I'll know more about both of those within, uh, within the next week or two.
And if, if you can send us an email or stop it and CS that would be great. The biggest thing, and I want to, I know you know this, Nick, but I, I'm saying this for general information. When, when I'm talking about the sixty million dollar loss, yes, the counties take a hit from that, but so do the private nursing.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, this isn't county, just county money that's being lost with the loss, with the potential loss of that sixty million dollars. I mean, I realize that the state has, you know, it could easily throw sixty million dollars into. You're right, that's, that's how I feel about.
No, but, but, but the, the other, the other part of it is that it's, it's, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. That Medicaid is a notoriously low payer for long-term care. And, and so to add an administrative burden on the, to do managed long-term supports and services. On top of the, of the state and the federal funds that, and the county, what, what they put into it. I don't know how the math works. I, I really don't. And, and the other thing that is curious about the, the committee wording is that. By one, it says by at least one managed care organization. It doesn't say. And it would, it doesn't make any.
That's not going to be any federal, right? Because you have to have some.
Everything, there's got to be choice, number one. But to do that, now, I, I can see where some people like the managed care organizations. And, and truth be told, I'm on the board of one of the managed care organizations. Not a real board, but nevertheless, an advisory board, which is the Grand State Health, my new managed health and families. That they, all managed care organizations have taken a hit. As a result of the, of the ending of the public health emergency. Their, their numbers are down substantially. And so whether, there's only seven thousand people that are in, that, that are in long-term care. And, and all the people are in managed care, but not for. The, the long-term supports and services on the community-based care, nursing facility and so forth. So it will be interesting to see.
If they have any, if they have any idea, not call it an idea. I'm trying to save that six, cut that sixty million out because I think they're going to eliminate the, you know, Mquip and ProShare. And somehow have that savings occur systemically. I think they're smoking grass, like English, okay? Because they don't know what, they have no concept of what they're doing.
I, I frankly would be surprised if they have that level of understanding. Now, two of the members of the, from the, actually three of the members. Sit on Health and Human Services. Committee. Elderly Affairs. So they've got to have some understanding of, of, of the long-term care. But whether they have that understanding in terms of what this would mean for Mquip and ProShare, I don't know. Number one. And number two is, if I recall, one of the things with managed care. Is that there can't be supplemental payments. Managed care makes payments to, on a capitated basis, they make payments to the providers. There can't be additional dollars that are going in, uh, into the pot. So there's a lot of.
Beyond the capitated, right?
It's just like Medicaid. Can subsidize, you know, that was one of the things that was discussed at the, at the committee, nursing home committee meeting. Well, what counties should create a subsidy? Well.
No, you can't do that.
You accept Medicaid, that's the only payment.
The, the other thing that is listed in, in this, and I do believe this may have some efficacy in terms of discussion. Which is using the, um, um, the, um. Special needs population, the decent, the so-called decent from, from a federal side of it. As well as departments looking to reinvigorate the whole idea of a PACE program. And PACE is the, an acronym for Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elder. And it's something that we had looked at here.
It was all part of the nursing.
That was all part of the.
Was to establish a PACE program within the nursing home to keep people out.
Tori and I have talked about this on, on a number of patients as well, and that is that. Pace under the current law at the federal level says everything has to be facility focused. And if, if they reside at that facility, one of the things that you threw out, Commissioner, was. The idea of a virtual pace, because you had different areas around there until such time that. If there was another nursing home, a new nursing home, and you could, you can embed pace right in the middle of it, which made a lot of sense to do that. It, are there, is there some flexibility to do that? Otherwise, from a workforce standpoint, I'm not sure how you're going to be able to make that work.
Yeah, we, you know, we've, we had that all of it. We, that was all in the original. Plan was to, you know, operate a PACE program right out of the nursing home.
So, so I will, I'll, I'll be able to keep you updated on this for a couple of reasons. Number one is the co-chair, one of the people that is on this committee that is being, looking at managed long-term supports and services. Is on the State Commission on Aging, ASMI. And then the other is on the other committee that is looking at nursing home and, and. Hospital bed availability. The co-chair of that is also on the State Commission on Aging. And so as a result of that, that will be something that will be discussed on a regular basis there. And then as I get information on that, I can.
Are they scheduled like on a bi-weekly basis?
Well, they have to schedule it faster than that if they want to remember.
First, what are they going to do? Well, you'll find that out today.
I'll, I'll, I'll get a better idea of that today.
The, the other thing I wanted to talk to, I just wanted to throw out, if the opportunity comes to say it, is. Our relationship with Wentworth Douglas and Frisbee, we keep them clear, you know, using Riverside. There, you know. We take the people that, that otherwise would languish in the hospitals. You know, either because they're too hard to care for, or, you know, there's a questionable funding mechanism or something. You know, we, I checked just last week with my admissions person. And I said, do you have anybody pending at Wentworth Douglas? No. If anybody pending at Frisbee? No. So we can keep, we, it, it just seems to me that there can be a mechanism to keep these hospitals clear. The counties just need to remember, and they need to be supported by their delegations. For what the purpose is for a county nursing home.
Yeah, the, the other, the other, I do think that the driver of that, doing that type of review is Dartmouth. Dartmouth Health, Dartmouth Health is the one that's doing it. Courtney Tanner is on that. And Ben Bradley, who was with Wentworth Douglas Hospital, now he's with Hospital Association. So the, the two of them have been the catalyst. Because it was a separate bill, Senate Bill two eighty-eight, which was being looked at. That got ITL or whatever happened to it. But it got the, the language of it in terms of what they wanted to do got embedded in HB two. So those, those two things are, are, are in HB two. And there's no, there's no time limit on that, that, that the one that we're talking about regarding the nursing home and the hospital association.
All right, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Nick, by just kind of sneaking that onto the agenda, but.
I know I'm a retired gent, but I stay pretty active.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, nobody, nobody can speak with more authority than somebody who was the Commissioner of Health and Human Services for eight years. You know, I mean, as, as you and I have joked in the past, you're the only one that was ever kept over. You know, everybody else, it's a four-year stint.
And, and I'm in regular contact with the current commissioner. Um, so I, I, I know what she's going through, especially with that, some of the challenges that they.
Well, you know, especially because you don't really know what's going on on the, on the federal level. I mean, they, they were talking about these, billions of dollars in cuts, but nobody tells you where it's coming from.
There, there is something that is coming down the pipe that has. And Tori, Tori and I have been talking about this as well. There's something called a Rural Transformation Grant. Uh, that is, that is coming down the pike. Exactly how that's all going to play out, I don't know. But, but there's a, a certain portion of that that is going to be equally divided between states. So New Hampshire would get the same amount as New York, California, Texas or Florida. Uh, and then there's another portion of it that is going to be competitively bid on the part of the, part of the states. But the guidance isn't there yet. But talking with a number of people.
Well, you know us, Nick.
It is already a food fight. Everybody's scrambling in order to get part of those dollars.
You know us, you know, there, we're, you know, if we can find some way to, you know, manage. I, I just got numbers from, uh. Shifting away from numbers of people sixty-five and over, you know, meaning, I, I think that's kind of an old statistic. You know, we, we used to use so and so many people that are sixty-five and over, you need so and so many beds. We're, you know, I think now the more, the more common number to be used is people eighty-five and over. And in the next twenty years, the number of people that are eighty-five and over in Stratford County doubles.
It does, the, the other variable, not to labor the point, because we do want, I do want to get to the air shield. But the other point is that from a workforce standpoint, is that the number of young people. That are coming out of high school, it's, it's a matter of demographics. That number has been declining over the past twenty years and will continue to decline over the next ten years or so before it starts to. I don't think it's going to be a hockey stick, but it will start to, start to turn around. So what that means is for a number of people who. Are, are, we need as a workforce, you're not going to have the people that are there. So again, being part of the community college system and the, um, board, as well as College of Health and Human Services there. There's got to be some work that's done in terms of building a workforce for the future.
We, we've been fortunate, you know, I, I said in the budget, or I'm sorry. The commissioner said in a budget message that our, our goal was to teach our way out of the LNA issue. And, and we've been fortunate in that respect. You know, we've had full classes and we've been able to keep the vast majority of the people that we're, we're, you know, dealing with. And that was really a, a commitment by the commissioners and the delegation, you know, to properly fund those. So when, when the incentives came from ARPA. We. Did it faster than we, we thought we were going to. We had a multi-year plan to build in the ARPA incentive into the base salary for those people, excuse me, I'm sorry. And, and what we ended up doing was having to do it a year quicker. Uh, because of some other pressures on the ARPA funds. But we did get it, you know, we did get it done. So we, we've, we're doing pretty well staffing-wise. And we don't use travel nurses.
And that's what we'll, we'll see with this Rural Transformation Grant, when that, when that information becomes more available.
We do use an occasional pool nurse, but we don't use travel nurses. You know, my, travel nurses, I just, in other counties that I have worked, which. You know, it's been Carroll, Hillsborough, Rockingham, but, you know. Issues that have come up when I've been acting administrator in those locations. Uh, travel nurses have, have been kind of, been identified as running away from their. Their, their state of origin, uh, because of some issue that's hot on the press. But not quite recorded in, in the registries yet. You know, and, and anyway, I'm sorry, I know that's not.
No, that, that's fine.
I kind of tricked you into it.
I saw her on the agenda, so. And it just so happens I'm going to that, that meeting this afternoon.
So George had mentioned this, so that was the other reason I tricked you into it.
Preparation for it. The, so if I can switch gears.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm done, Nick. And, and just thank you.
Something called Air Shield. So several months ago, uh, somebody I know that's out in California. Got ahold of me about this technology and this product. That is really designed to clean the air in healthcare facilities, hospitals, nursing homes and so forth. And so he wanted to talk to me about. Um, whether that was something worthwhile to look at and, and about the technology and so forth. And I said, I can talk to you about it at a business level, but I can't talk to you about it on a clinical or nursing level. And that's where I, I called up Tori and got Tori engaged. And so over the past several months, um, we have had several conversations with the leadership. Of this group called Virus Killer. And it's a limited liability corporation out in California. And they, their, their value proposition is to do. To put a, a technology in that will kill pathogens in the air. And it's virus independent. It, it, it could be COVID, it could be flu, it could be other type of, it doesn't know. It doesn't differentiate between one versus the other, cleaning the air. It reduces infections, um, on the part of residents, staff. It reduces infections um uh on the part of residents, staff, um people or in a hospital, you know, the patients that would be be in there. Um it also lowers energy costs. Cause it uses a different type of technology. And if you, I believe I sent you a thing that was in um uh in-depth New Hampshire, I think it was, talking about the potential rise in electricity access moving moving forward. Um, and uh and 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 a combination, a combination of factors here as well is now that we're schools are beginning and then you have the advent of flu. And I think as you well know, COVID has not gone away. Um and 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 the some of the difficulty in terms of uh for people to make a differentiation between is it COVID or is it flu? Um and so and then some of the um some of the the uh discussion that's happening about vaccine availability moving forward. So there's a combination of factors here that that potentially create an opportunity. Um, and so what um what our ask is, uh and I'll let Tori speak in a in a moment. But our ask is to have Stafford County um the the leadership, whether it's yourself, Ray, or others on a facility level and so forth, to have a virtual meeting with the leadership of this this group called Virus Killer and AirShield um to for them to talk a little bit more about a proposal that they've spent, and I've given you the proposal, came back, came in in July. It's for a no-cost pilot. They're not looking to prove the technology, the technology works, so forth. What they're looking at is to show what the what the value would be in terms of lower energy costs, um lower infections, lower uh uh reduction in absenteeism on the part of staff. Uh we had a call the other day and Tori asked a number of questions related to metrics, what type of metrics would we be looking at? But what they want to do is to work with, work with you. The only cost to county, the cost of time and be able to provide the data and answer some of the questions that they have, because what they want to do is they want to establish baseline saying, is what it looks like today. We install the technology. So you get the baseline, get the technology, get the measures that you're gonna look at and say, is it, is it having the type of impact that they proved it in elsewhere, but what we want to be able to do it is to do it here.
You and you know Nick that that we track that. I mean, that that is part of our operation, that's part of what survey does when they come in and and part of what we need to report to the state, you know, on a regular basis. I mean, yes, fortunately, we've had no flu, but you know, we're not in the flu season really.
Right.
Uh certainly, we still have COVID. Witness it right here. Uh even though I've had nine vaccines, uh uh I had it.
When you start growing a third arm, you'll.
Yeah, I know, that's probably coming from the vaccines, but I'm in. I'm about to have my tenth vaccine uh next week, um along with our combination, you know, flu shot clinics.
So uh so let me let me ask Tori to just uh chime in both in terms of either the technology or to just add to the sort of the high-level view that I've I've provided here.
Sure, I I think it always uh and it fascinates me when we say super-secret new technology. It's not new, it's not secret, it's not um yeah, all that advanced. It's called um atmospheric plasma, which is really you've got your four states of matter, you've got liquid, gas, um air, and then you've got plasma, which is what you get when you add heat or um mag- magnetize or uh X-ray gas because it creates a charge to the uh atoms in a a gas. So you're really just taking a subset of a gas and giving it this new strength to then go out and use that extra charge to bust up pathogen.
Ionization.
It is exactly ionization. Yep. So you've got an ionized gas, which is what a plasma is. And it works because the particles in ionized gas, in plasma, go out and um sanitize essentially pathogens. It's currently a technology that's used in treatment for tumors, in treatment for wound care, in treatment for sanitizing surfaces. It's safe. Um, it it's in in this application, they're they come in and do a a kind of, let's look at the facility, let's look at the um kind of current HVAC and talk about the way we would, in their way, we would uh
act.
Come at that, you know, what if, what's the hardware that's required for that? They can do it at a in the room level, they can do it at a floor level, they can do it at the main HVAC level. Uh, they're also working with an MIT-founded data analytics um and initiative called Clockwork, which helps them understand efficiencies around um, you know, how much are we putting out and what are we seeing for results? It's kind of a new way of looking at cause and effect. What's the impact that we're actually having? Uh from my public health perspective, I think this is really encouraging as a if a reason is as a cost-effective way to look at your uh infection control plan for health-acquired infections. We've got challenges with vaccination environment, you've got folks coming in that are more frail, you've got more access for in and out because we want people to be engaged with their communities. The risks for infection continue to go up. Our tools to prevent them and respond to them, especially in the current funding environment, seem a little unstable. Uh, so the goal is to understand and how can this help? I know CMS does not require any specific air quality measures, uh which, you know, I guess makes sense because setting standards for air quality in any healthcare environment would be really challenging, given especially the physical infrastructure, um variables that come into play. So it the way we we look at this is kind of what is actually the rate of infection in these facilities? What is actually happening? Are you seeing a decrease in um and it certainly can't always be attributable. It's it's not a, you know, um double-blind study. It's just a it can't, I guess the the bottom line, it can't hurt, it doesn't cost anything, aside from time, um and kind of some knowledge investment. And the the only um risk is of um really there being, you know, in ionization in the community, but but if Riverside was airtight, we'd be having a different conversation.
Right, I mean, it's all building, that's that, you know.
And it makes a big difference when you're not able to get other fresh air into, because of the air conditioners and all of the things. Riverside's a great location and the this company's interested, from my understanding, I kind of brought my skeptic hat to this, is that they want to continue to build their kind of their learning model of where does it work and how does it work? They they had it work in some other, everywhere they've done it, it's worked and they've seen a noticeable impact. They're working on building out their business case and uh looking at what does the you, how does it work with the other analytic tools that they're putting in place that we may or may not decide to kind of talk about, but I I think it can only be good.
Well, the nice part is we have the, we have the base statistics now.
You do.
You know, we have a uh, you know, our, the infection control records that we need to key and maintain and go over at every infection control meeting, provide the perfect.
Exactly. It's not a, you don't have any additional lift there.
You know, there's, well, the the nice part is we we have the backwards data.
Right, I have some historical.
You know, we have the historical data that that uh from everything that you and Nick have described, we have that data. We have, you know, the absentee data, we have, uh you know, I'm talking about from employees, we have that. We have the reasons for the absentee data. Uh we have the tremendously uh accurate infection control.
Can you say the same thing about the other nine counties?
Oh, yeah, everybody has to have it, or or they would be, uh you know, they would be cited, they would be cited in survey. Now, we might go a little bit further, uh Nick, in in terms of of, you know, vaccines and things. We might, we might be, uh I I don't, cause there's not really a it comes out more in your um in your star rating system. If you look at the star rating system, you know, and you look at, that's broken down into several components, you can actually, you know, click on and click down in those components to find levels of vaccination and that kind of thing. We're, you know, fanatical about, you know, flu and and COVID vaccines for um uh our residents and we're in, we incentivize um flu and and COVID vaccines for our staff. And and how we incentivize that is we pay, we pay for the vaccine and we pay the staff to get it. When it comes to flu, we give them twenty dollars, you know, thank you. Um and for COVID, the the now this might change because of the recent FDA announcement. Um if you are vaccinated, eh currently vaccinated, uh based on the uh the CDC definition, and you get COVID, we don't charge you your earned time for when you're out. Uh however, if you get COVID and you're not currently vaccinated, then you have to use your sick time or, you know, to 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 cover your timeout. And that's our incentives for the people to get the vaccines.
I think part of, part of what Tori and I, uh when we, when we talked about this and immediately both of us uh not abstract, you know, uh probably because of the work that we had done with the IDN. Uh but the, but the other part of it is, I really think based on what you're you're going through, uh Ray, is that I think they can learn from you. Right? In in terms of they're they're doing with it, again, uh cause you've got a forward-looking and you've got innovative in terms of of doing this. So I think beyond having having this this type of a pilot, I think they would learn from you uh in in terms of how this might work in in other areas. That's, I I wanted to add that piece of it. The the other that is, um and Brian Travis, who was the CEO that we've been on, he's spent a lot of time in the utility industry. So he knows that industry really, really well and so forth. And one of the things that has happened is not so much an issue here in New Hampshire. It could be, but in other states where the, you've read about these massive data centers that are springing up across the country to cool the 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 data centers that they have for artificial intelligence, all the work that they want to do. That is putting a huge drain on the energy uh uh en- energy companies in terms of what they're providing. And it's it's creating greater demand that's gonna drive up costs and so forth. So from the standpoint that they can come up with something both at an individual level, but then one of the things that they do in other states is that they work with utility companies. Right? In terms of being able to make um have some discussions with them about either incentives or grants or other type of things that they could, they could do uh something different. That at the, and the the last thing I would say is that I did have a conversation last week with Brendan Williams. Uh and I indicated that we wanted to talk to him about where's where's the, with the Healthcare Association, with all the things that are going on, you know, with state budget as well as some of the other things. And I mentioned this this piece of it to him and say, you know, this is something that might be of value to other other areas. And I think Tori also mentioned to them the other day, following our call the other day, uh is to do some sort of a session for the Public Health Association at an upcoming meeting that they're gonna have. Because again, it even, by the way, neither one of us is being compensated anything for this, nor do we expect to be. But it's it's something that we both feel, um given our our longstanding relationship with with the county as well as a potential future customer of long-term care uh in the in the state. I think things like this are really important to get out in front of in terms of the innovation. And and I I think something like this, the the idea of uh again, our ask is um have point of contact that we can then get in touch and arrange a um a Zoom call where they will ask a number of questions that will be at a level of detail that it's gonna be um that you as well as others on on your, on your team would be able to to answer and then looking, and then what they could do is then turn around and say, all right, here's the roadmap, here's what the timeline is gonna be. It is a, it is not an extensive timeline. They said, I think Tori, you asked it the other day from, if if we gotta go until when they could do it, was was what, thirty to sixty days?
That'd be great, and yes, it would be in before survey.
Well, the other thing too is that we might be able to help them in other ways is the the jail is a classic example, because we have air handling systems in the jail, which we don't have in Riverside at all. Uh and where you have air handling systems, something of that technology, you might want to offer that to them because you've got, you'd have two dynamics.
That's how we started the conversation because I knew that the uh HVAC project at the uh court here was also.
Right, they got the courthouse too, but you know, I'm all for, and I, you know, Ray and I have discussed this with, you know, we have a commission level. We're all for doing any of these combinations if it would help technology, it would help, you know, it would help our situation, or at least we'd have, we'd we'd learn something from it. Um, we're in, you know, we're in all the way around. I mean, whatever we have to do, we would do.
I'm kind of curious, how do you calculate your metrics based on the data provided?
I don't.
You don't?
Which is the advantage of being me uh today. Uh, that is the question for them, which is what is the, what metrics are they gonna look at? So one of the things they do, you know, both the um and the metrics that you guys follow, but they will also do, um they talked about uh spot checking with um surface, you know, per surface pathogen.
Swabs, that is, and it's just, okay, maybe the jail would be a perfect setup for that because we are a Petri dish, so to speak.
Yep, yep.
Hey, uh.
Just knock it off, okay?
Riverside gets first priority.
Well, Riverside should get first priority.
I mean, it's just, I'm just joking.
I, there's no reason we can't have a conversation about scoping the entire um complex, because that's how we started the conversation.
Yeah, because that's what we said, we zeroed in on the nursing home.
Right, well, the nursing home is an old building and it gives, it gives them, and they're in business, it's gonna give them some idea whether they want to use this in fifteen, sixty-year-old buildings that have similar.
But there are more nursing homes than there are jails.
Right, and just, yeah. Yeah, and and just, just for the fact that we've got some elbow, we've got some, you know, we've got.
You know, with somebody in the flu and COVID season, as we know, I mean, it's kind of a crime to do a study.
Exactly. And yeah, we do know that New Hampshire does better as far as vaccinations for for folks in nursing homes, but the numbers still aren't great. You know, COVID for New Hampshire is about fifty percent and a feather, if in terms of vaccination rates for residents. You have flu is about thirty, thirty-five percent and RSV, because the vaccination is fairly new, is very, very low.
We're in the nineties.
Then you are the outlier.
We're in the nineties all the way around. We we uh offer RSV and and we're just about to have our two clinics in September for flu and COVID.
For staff or for residents?
Both, both. We, you know, the staff is not mandatory, residents it's not mandatory, but we do everything we can to twist people's arms, you know, cause ninety percent of the time it's families, right? It's not the residents. So we don't have that many capable residents. Um, you know, they all have guardians or durable powers of attorney. It's probably higher than ninety percent. Um, but uh we, we have previous success have been around ninety-three percent. And uh you know, and so I'll know better, obviously, coming up quite soon because I think our our uh clinics, like the sixteenth, I could be wrong, of September, the nineteenth, or or maybe both days or or whatever. So and and I'm the first in line because I can't ask my employees to do it if I'm not gonna do it.
So so for, um so that we don't consume your entire meeting here, but but the, uh so as the next step, Ray, use you as a point of contact?
Use me as a point of contact.
Use you as a point of contact.
And I'm gonna get uh people from either the buildings, uh you know, I'm sure. I can, I can extend you my number right now if you. Well, I'll, it's, no, 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 to me, okay? And then I'll invite, you know, I'll invite the appropriate people from the appropriate uh departments. Excellent.
Yeah, cause again, what we want to have is that, is that that initial meeting so that you can ask questions of them and they can ask questions of you. And then it's it's at that point as well that it would zero in on what the scope of it would be. But again, when Tori and I first talked to them, um we, one of the things we did talk about was was the was the court here, right? Because again, there's a lot of people coming in and out. Because again, there's a lot of people coming in and out of here.
I'll get representatives, um, um, I'll have Jill, uh, get representatives from the court. Cause I'd like to have, you know, somebody from the court, they might. Defer to somebody on, on a, you know, on a state level, I'm not sure, but we'll work through the clerk. Uh, who, actually Dougie has the best relationship with, you know, and the most relationship with the clerk. Cause you know, we've been doing that roof project and driving them crazy.
What might make sense, Ray, is if we're able to connect with you and, and with Doug and, and do kind of an initial scoping conversation and then take it back. To fix, to say, pull that larger group together to say, this is what it looks like.
Yeah, well, I might, yeah, I might invite a couple more than, than Doug and I, I, I just, I need to. I need to think it through for, you know, a couple of days and figure out who to invite. Who would be the initial one and then a more detailed one, or however anyone is.
And I think the, um, uh, the, looking at it is that. Um, I don't want to try to boil the ocean here, I, I basically want to try to get something that is. Demonstrates the efficacy and, and so forth, establishes a baseline, so you say, as good as a baseline as you have right now. Does this move the needle at all?
Yeah.
And if so, alright, how do we do that? If not, are there some other areas within, within the county where, where, where we might be able to do that?
The nice part again, and I, I don't mean to repeat myself, but the, the, the place with the best baseline is gonna be Riverside. Because, you know, our mandatory infected control, things that we need to prevent during survey.
Yeah, then that, that's the sweet spot for them as, as well because the. Uh, and Tori, you asked a question about somebody mass on the, on the metrics and so forth. This is where that, that arrangement they have with this, uh, this data analytics group, um, out of MIT Clockworks. I have to be confused with Clockwork Orange, but they, but to have, have that type of. Um, resource available so that it, it's data that they're gathering from other areas. And perhaps we can learn from them as well.
Sure.
I'll bring your time and, and your attention to, we're in.
When do you expect survey, what's your time?
December. You know, so it, it would, uh, I mean, that's when we were here last year, but as you know, there's a hundred and, uh. Unlike this, the, unlike the jail. Who has the advantage of knowing when their inspectors are going to come?
Oh, we have no idea.
You liars. Uh, I have a hundred and eighty days, so I have ninety days before and ninety days after, although I track. When they've come to the other counties, that's my really only, you know, because we always email each other when they're, like, they're in. Rockingham, I think they're gonna leave today, and when I covered Rockingham last year, last summer, while they were looking for an administrator. That's when they were there, uh, they were there.
Same order every year?
No, but, but, um. You know, you kind of get a sense that it's kind of, kind of be a. If you graphed it. You know, on, if you charted it. It, the, the top end of the chart. And, and the thirty days one way or the other would, would be probably eighty percent of, of the likelihood. So, unless, unless you're dealing with a complaint. You know, if you have some serious complaint. Um, or, which could be, in our case, I've never had a complaint from a family. My complaints have been facility generated, you know, which as you know, we're required to send in. Uh, if you have something that they want to investigate. Then that might alter the time of their survey, in other words, if you have one close to survey time, they might say, oh, we, we might as well go in and do the whole thing at one time. Uh, right now, as far as I know, we don't have any complaints that they're looking at.
Any other questions?
Nope, I know you're gonna be going to there.
Yeah, I'm sorry to, yeah.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry to sneak this in.
Well, set it up, you could do me a favor since I can't go to Congress as, as a result of a bunch of stuff we've got going on. If you can call me later on, let me know, I'm assuming it's just an organizational meeting, you're not gonna.
Uh, that's what I'm assuming.
That's what I'm assuming too, so.
Don't be afraid to throw out the money.
We've got a meeting at two thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, throw. Don't be afraid to throw out the money.
Throw the money, you, you know, you understand the system, because we do, so.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Alright guys, thanks for, thanks for your reference on this, I know it's. I know you, I know your heart's in the right place because you're doing it for nothing.
It's exciting as hell getting them.
No, it is exciting, it's great, I, I think, I mean.
It's, it's exciting.
Well, it's especially valuable for us because all our rooms are two-person rooms.
Two-person rooms, we can't control disease, we can't control.
You know, it, it, it makes it so much more difficult. You know, for us.
Matter, matter of fact, one of the initial conversations that we did have was. To do it on a room, just putting, putting a device in a room, which they could do. Their. Their preferences as well as our preferences to the facility.
That's great, that's, that would be my preference.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, good luck. Give me a follow with Nick. Thank you, thanks, thank you.
It was a good one, yeah, it ends.
Yeah, sure, okay. Yeah, that's what happened to me before.
Wow, ready.
Take care of yourself, okay?
It's so good to see you. Okay. We've got the list of upcoming events. Uh, Commissioner Levitt has to take a quick call, we don't have any old and new business at this point.
No, I can't think of anything else to say.
Okay, yeah, we've said enough, okay, we got questions or comments from the public. Susan, you got any questions?
It's not necessarily a question, it's just a comment going back to the first discussion we had on, on the. Natural gas generators and the solar firm and all of that.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, um. Packy Campbell has been extremely involved, especially in Rochester area with the trackers and stuff. And I'm just wondering if that would be a good resource with regard to the solar, and that's all that I'm gonna say today, because it's been a very long meeting.
I think we know better after our.
After the next week.
Which will be a public meeting and of course you, I hope you will attend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and perhaps, you know, coming from one of you extending an invitation to Packy, maybe that would invite him to, to come down. Um, and talk about.
We remember Joy from the delegation, like, oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry, Commissioner Levitt knows him well.
Yep.
Any questions, Councilor?
Uh, no, sir, just a comment saying, uh, kind of like you, uh, talking about the energy stuff. As everybody's aware, it's bringing everything, jumping to the roof for energy calls and. Uh, we love anything that, uh, provides, uh, relief for our residents in regards to utility payments, uh, protects the environment. And helps give us some more resiliency for, uh, our grids, everything keeps getting over.
This police and fire training thing.
No, I intend to talk directly to the Chief of Police and the Chief, uh, Fire, uh, to make sure that they're tracking the county.
Yeah, and, and like I said, it's, it's for everyone and it, you know, there might be, I understand that it's being sponsored by the big departments that have the money to. To sponsor it, but the smaller towns can benefit from this, because they can use this.
Sounds sexy, you hear CS gas, you hear SRT, uh, for hostage rescue and stuff like that, and you're like, that's gonna get some good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I think every, I think everybody.
Like that, being able to do a little bit of training in our own county versus having to go elsewhere.
Right, yeah, and this where they can run their own training to specifically go after what they're interested in. Instead of attending something that, that, you know, there's thirty fire departments that are invited to.
Is Chief Plumber the POC for them?
Yes, he's, yeah, yes, he, he's been the one, and Dover frankly.
He initiated.
Dover's the one that's frankly funding it.
Right, they're funding a lot.
They're funding almost all of it, we're using. Uh, our, how do I say it, Susan? We, we say forced labor, but what they really are, 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 uh, people that do.
Community direct program participants.
Yes, that's, that's the politically correct way to say it, there are, there are, uh. Uh, they're helping us. Yeah, they're, well, they're doing that instead of spending time in jail.
Right.
Or they're doing that to offset the cost of, of a transitional housing.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're somehow contributing, uh, back to the community that. You know, they might have violated in, in some way or another over time.
I have. One more comment.
Sure.
Would you allow it? Um, as, as we know, September first is a couple of days away, um, and. About this time of year, the warming center seems to come back on the burner. And I haven't really seen very much within the communities or with discussion here with regards to that. And do you have an update in, you know, November is gonna be here in two months, and December is gonna be here.
Yeah, so we, we, we have reached out to the vendor, present vendor, which everyone is, uh, satisfied with, including, uh. Uh, High Chief Plumber, who was the main, main contact for all the, for all the, uh, emergency management directors. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting, uh, in the, in, between the first and second week of September. An administrative meeting with them to talk about logistics. Uh, I've got to go, uh, to Summersworth. Um, to speak to the council in Summersworth at some point, based on when the mayor lets me know when that's going to occur. The plan right now, unless it changes, is we're gonna continue the same vendor, it's gonna be the same operation as it was last year. Um, we all, uh. The dynamic of how we move forward with, with the county site is still in negotiation in terms of. Of how it gets paid for, who's going to do what and where. Um, but, uh, I think it's all, that, that whole thing is just, it's moving forward, but at least for the next year, the next season. Uh, there will be, there will be a warming center, uh, it will, it will still be a willing pond. Uh, and we, that's the plan at this point, Summersworth has tentatively agreed to that. Uh, they had, uh, a couple of issues they wanted to discuss with me, uh, on an administrative level in terms of some of the issues that were going on. But they weren't bad issues, they were, it was mostly about overtime coverage for. Uh, and their services and personnel and things like that.
And we might have some ability under the, the state grant.
State grant to actually reduce some costs for the, for, for those municipalities we're paying. Uh, which is always good news.
Yeah, the state finally, we finally reconcile, or state finally accepted our reconciliation. Uh, and has, has increased our funding and we have a two-year commitment.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that won't. Pay for everything.
Right.
But, but it, it should lower the municipalities' costs.
At least the next year and maybe the following year, depending on nature of whether we go, I, I'm assuming we're gonna, I don't, I don't assume anything.
If we can't assume anything, all we can do is open fire and go forward.
Right, you know, we've got, we've got a municipal election coming up as well. Uh, you know, in November, the players could change, the mayors could change, the dynamics of policy could change, so I don't have. I, I, I can't go too far to live, but I don't see that there's a lot of other alternatives, I know Dover's very, very. Um. At least with this, the present council. Interested in moving forward with the county option. Uh. And, uh, of course Summersworth district, because Summersworth wants it.
Uh, and there's.
Anything or not, yeah. What happens in Rochester is gonna, you know, that's, that's up to, I, I just don't know. I, I don't, I don't know, I, I can't guess what's gonna happen with the municipal elections. But I do know we're going through this year, we're gonna be getting through this year and we, we have been getting estimates on, on, uh, costs. Relative costs on the new building, um, whatever caused, and, uh, they're gonna have to decide how they wish to receive the gap.
Well, I guess the other thing is, is that, um, even though it's municipal elections in November, the new seating doesn't happen until June or.
That's correct.
So.
Well, this, this, well, the, the contract is with the county, so. Uh, we, we're not going, we're, we're not going through that political dynamic right now, so, uh. It's, where that will have an effect is what's gonna happen next year with, with, with funding.
And, and with a more permanent location.
Right.
I think it's, that's what's gonna be.
That's what's gonna drive it, right, that's what's gonna drive the, the discussion at some point, probably in the, probably mid-winter. Uh, early spring, because if I'm gonna do something, we've gotta get, I wanna, you know, Summersworth wants us out of there. So, hopefully looking at construction period next year.
The, the other part of that is, I, I think. You might need to make some pledges to Summersworth.
Right.
To allow, to allow us in there this year.
Yeah.
By saying that we have a, a little more firm plan for next year not to be in Summersworth.
Right, right.
You know, I, I think.
Oh, dangling the carrot.
Well, we've kind of bagged them.
Yeah, we bagged them for forty-five.
I was gonna say, we've bagged them.
I know.
Beyond what they've wanted to, to have.
Yeah, it would have been a different discussion had we had a nursing home. Frustrating thing about this is we're gonna be talking about funding a, a homeless shelter. But not doing anything for the sick and the old.
No, I agree.
That's, 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 that's the, that's just the, the.
It's crazy.
It's just not.
I have.
It's unvadable to me why we wouldn't want to do both. At the same time and set ourselves up for the next fifty years, but. There are always, people are always complaining about the fact the government never plans for anything, but when you go to plan for something, they kick the can down the road because nobody wants to pay for it. They kick the can down the road, when they kick the can down the road, it, it eventually all costs us more money, people in the end. It just makes no sense, but that's just me. Anyway, we got a motion going to non-public, brother? Or, let's see, Susan, you got another question?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I appreciate the question, it's a good question. Motion to go in and on public, okay, I'll second that, uh, as we'll call Commissioner Levitt's, my son, yes, okay, Commissioner.